All set?
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, December 2nd. Ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I will entertain a motion to enter into classification hearing. So moved. I will second. Any discussion? Hearing none in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Floor is yours, ma'am. Welcome. And we shall do our dance. Annual dance.
Okay, I have a letter here. Do you want me to read it or...
Whatever you feel fit.
Okay, on Thursday, November 20th, 2014, the Board of Assessors received an email from the Department of Revenue stating the Commissioner of Revenue has determined that the locally assessed values of real and personal property in the town of Brookfield represent the full and fair cash valuation as of January 1st, 2014, for the fiscal year 2015. And that these proposed property assessments satisfy the minimum requirements for certification. Okay, tonight, the Board of Selectmen will just decide the fiscal year 2005 tax rate policy options, selecting the residential factor, which will determine the percentages of the tax burden to be borne by each class of property, and options of granting an open space discount residential exemption and small commercial exemption. So a single tax, a single rate, residential factor of one would tax all classes of property. The classes are commercial, residential, industrial, and open space at the full and fair cash value share of the tax levy, so it would all be the same tax rate.
Tax rate would be equal across the board then?
Yes. A split rate, a residential factor of less than one, would reduce the share of the tax levy paid by the residential and open space property owners and shift those taxes to commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers. And given the large percentage of our tax base in the residential class, 92.7% is residential, a split tax rate would burden the small percentage of commercial, industrial, and personal properties. By unanimous vote, three to zero, the Board of Assessors recommends adoption of a single tax rate. Please note, historically, the Board of Selectmen had voted to adopt a single tax rate.
And establishing a single tax rate would bring our tax rate to what?
We don't have, I don't have all the information yet. I don't know what the tax rate will be.
Do you know where we're at with right now?
We are, we got the preliminary approval for what I just said. We, all our values are approved. We have new growth of $59,921. But I don't have any, everyone else got to do their, do their part of the recap. We're almost there, but not yet.
You think we're premature in deciding this now?
Excuse me?
You think we're premature in deciding this?
No.
Are there any questions from anybody? Nick?
No, I think it's the, I'm looking, I'd rather say with a single rate right now.
Aye, sure.
It served us very well in the past and I think will serve us in the next year.
So I will entertain said motion.
I'll make that motion.
To accept the single tax rate for the next fiscal year? Would it be fiscal year?
Yes, fiscal year.
Yes.
Yes, so moved.
So I will need that motion, yes.
I will second. Any discussion? Hearing none in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything from us?
And then we have open space discount, but we don't really have open space. Then we have the residential exemption, where the people that own the property would, well, adopting a residential exemption increases the residential tax rate. The amount of the tax levy paid by the class remains the same, but because of the exempted valuation, it is distributed over less assessed value. The higher rate creates a shift within the class that reduces the taxes paid by homeowners with moderately valued properties. Those taxes are then paid by owners of rental properties, vacation homes, and hired valued homes. The exemption is a way that resort areas like Cape Cod and the Berkshires can provide some tax relief for permanent residences.
And then the small commercial exemption, you voted unanimously not to support all three of these.
Right.
So my assumption is that we do not have to entertain any discussion.
Okay.
We don't have to adopt this. I think we're good.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sounds great.
It's painless, right? Thank you, Donna. One of the quickest ones we've done. Yes, sir.
Donna, explain the small commercial exemption.
The small commercial exemption increases the commercial industrial tax rates. The amount of the tax levy paid by those two classes remains the same, but because the exempted valuation, it is distributed over less assessed value. The higher rate creates a shift that reduces the taxes paid by owners of properties occupied by small businesses and shifts them, and shifts them to larger commercial industrial tax base. We all, we only have small commercial businesses here, so the exemption benefits the owner of a parcel who is not necessarily the owner of the business.
And theoretically, it could be shifted back to the residential tax base then?
No, it would just stay in.
If you're not collecting enough taxes, doesn't it fall on the residents of Brookfield?
No, it takes whatever's in the commercial section and it would shift that to the bigger commercial properties. We don't really have anything here in Brookfield.
Are you familiar with any? Are you familiar with any?
Any.
Large commercial?
Well, we have, oh.
They would be considered large commercial?
Yeah.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Hulcrum?
Yeah, I just wanted you to read it for the public here, so.
Oh, okay.
I hope the open space we see is adopted for some reason.
Do you want me to read that?
Yes, I would if you could quickly explain it a little bit.
Adopting an open space discount lowers the open space tax because the amount of the levy paid by the class is reduced. Those taxes are shifted to the residential class alone, which means a higher residential tax rate. This exemption would grant an exemption of not more than 25% open space. All classified open space is currently in Chapter 61, 61A, and 61B. These chapter lands are currently assessed at 25% of their fair market value or lower.
Any other questions? Hearing none? Thank you again, ma'am.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn the classification hearing. So moved. I will second. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number, actually, let's come back up. I wanted to, I get the classification hearing out of the way. Entertain a motion to approve the expense warrant for December 2nd, 2014. So moved. I will second. Any discussion? Hearing none in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Entertain a motion to approve the amended selectmen minutes for 9:30. We have a regular executive, 10:14 regular, and 11:12 executive. So moved. I will second. Any discussion? Hearing none in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Entertain a motion to acknowledge the monthly reports of the Brookfield Emergency Squad for November 2014. So moved. I will second. Any discussion? Hearing none in favor?
Aye.
Announcements. Brookfield Food Pantry is always looking for your help in the form of cash or donations. Please contact either Ms. Woodward at 508-867-3891, or Ms. Walker at 508-867-2281, to help your neighbors. The Food Pantry is open every Wednesday and Saturday from 9:30 to 11:00 a.m. There is an announcement on here that we read last week. I do not know the individual. I think it's through the Apple Seed, the sports program.
What's with the Apple Seed?
Is it the Luminary?
Luminaries.
Luminaries. That's where we place the bags around the common, and we're going both east and west on Route 9 this year. Anyone that's seen it, it's definitely, I don't know if you've taken a look at it.
No, last year I wasn't seeing it, even when I missed it.
Absolutely breathtaking on Christmas Eve. A lot of volunteers do that, but we need money for that.
No, that's just the one night, right? Christmas Eve is on, that's it. One-shot deal. Okay.
So if anybody out there is interested in donating any amount of money to help widen that stretch, contact the Selectmen's office and we will get that to the appropriate place. Any other announcements? Hearing none? Anybody wish to address the board this evening? Welcome, ma'am. Welcome.
First of all, I think you have another announcement. Can I pull it up?
Oh, sir.
The tree lighting.
That's not on there as well. December, is it 7th?
Yeah.
Sunday at 4:30?
Next Sunday. Next Sunday at 4:30.
Pretty good, huh? Santa cookies, cider?
Santa cookies. Hot chocolate.
Right on the common.
Everything on the common.
Thank you, ma'am, for reminding me of that.
And he will be here, I hope, on the fire.
Thank you.
Okay. And the other thing I'd just like to touch on is the town meeting, which I thought was horrible. And I don't know if we can do anything to channel it in any other direction than what it took that night, but I was very, I don't know, I just was upset at seeing people get up on the floor and call other people that are doing the jobs for the town names, no matter what they think or what, I mean, they chastise the yellow sign. Everybody has a problem with the yellow sign and the man that has the yellow sign. But I get after him for putting names up there too, but at the same time, there are a lot of good things that go up on that sign. But when we get up on our town floor and we turn around and we start calling people names, I don't think it's in the best interest of the town. I really don't.
My bad.
And I don't know what we can do to put a stop to it, but I think that it goes beyond that, that some of the people that were doing the name-calling and the ridiculing and showing that I know more than the selectmen know and so forth, they also don't stop there. They just keep right on going. They go home and they put it out on the blogs, they put it out on Facebook, they put it out everywhere, and yet they turn around and criticize our yellow sign. No, come on.
But the thing is with the meeting, I mean, there's only one person in charge of the meeting, the Selectmen are not running it properly.
That's right, and I wish they would speak to him.
The moderator is in charge, he's in charge of the meeting.
Well, you can speak to him because he's an elected official. But we speak to that camera every single day. Get out and vote. It's not just the polling booths in November or May, it's our special town meetings, it's our annual town meetings. Your voice means something. Forty people deciding the fate of this town is just sad.
I thought it was very sad. Very, very sad. Thank you for.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board this evening?
Got to sign it, I forgot to sign it, sorry about that. Welcome. Thanks for having me. Came to request something from the Board of Selectmen. I read the information about the town meeting. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend. There was a discrepancy about some bills that were submitted to the town after an accident in March. I had to resubmit my accident form because my first one went missing, which bothered me, but I kind of just let it go because I had, you know, my social security number, my medical information, all that stuff on it, kind of bothered me. Well, three weeks ago, I started getting collection calls from collecting companies for the fact that my bills had not been paid that I incurred while I was working for the town of Brookfield. A, I'm asking that the town pay those bills that were incurred in March, and B, I would like a letter from somebody that I can submit to the creditors showing that it was not me being delinquent and having a significant negative effect on my credit, because I don't believe that is very fair at all.
No.
I understand we may have, we may have had our differences.
It has nothing to do with.
And I know that. But I mean, if you got phone calls from a collection agency, I've had nine of them now.
Have you got any written notices in the mail?
Every piece of paperwork and documentation has been immediately turned over to the Fire Chief, which.
We should get a copy of that in our office, too.
Well, the issue lies in the fact that it was, the minutia of law, state law, requires a previous year's bill to have a town vote in order to pay for it.
They were submitted in, the accident happened in March.
Exactly right.
The workers' comp claim was, the paperwork was filed, I kept a copy of the paperwork because I was insightfully thinking of that. And I wasn't made aware that that paperwork was missing until sometime in July, which to me, I'm sorry, but I submitted it where it was supposed to be done. And I believe the reason that paperwork started to come to the forefront was that there was the first initial collection from Harrington Hospital.
That's when I became aware of it probably about a month or two ago. That's the first time I heard of it.
And.
And then we found a bill that was in a file cabinet. We were told that the bill was sent to another town, so it's just one huge, and it's not just you, it's two other individuals.
Oh, I'm aware of it. However, I'm not here to speak on behalf of the other individuals.
Well, we are here to speak on all three.
Right.
And we actually reopened the warrant to add those three bills into that.
Right.
So.
However, I do, I'm gonna ask, and I don't know if the Board of Selectmen can do it, or it needs to come from finance, or it needs to come from Town Council, but I need something to submit to the creditors, because as we're all aware of.
Can we reach out to Town Council to see if.
That has a.
Not just for this gentleman, for the other two individuals?
Pretty significant impact on my credit, which it already has, because.
Yours is a larger bill, like the other individuals. We have a smaller bill from another individual that I actually spoke to, and it's not even workers' comp, it's a different level because of the EMT and Fire, so it's just, it's an onion, it's just so many layers. We're gonna try to pay that through donations if we have that, because we can legally do that through donations, that $505, and then we'll have to readdress the $2,000 at a later date.
My only question for you, and I don't know whether you can answer this or not, only because of my experience in firing EMS, there was one, only one transport bill submitted?
For both individuals?
Yeah, because we're.
Two separate in the same ambulance.
That which, my understanding is you can't do. You can only bill for one transport. And that, that would be something to sit, if somebody had asked me, I would have told you.
I asked the Fire Chief.
He said two.
I asked the Fire Chief, and he says the town of Brookfield does it. And then we had a resident, we talked about Ms. Wilson, having people come up and making assumptions on the floor, a resident came up and said, her assumption, she's 99% sure that it's law that you have to do that, and you're.
I'm not aware of it. I thought you could only bill for one.
I consider it double-dipping, and that's where I had an issue with it as well.
I also agree with you on that fact. But my big concern is.
Getting it paid.
A, getting it paid, but B, I was refused credit because of it, because it's an outstanding bill.
Well, I apologize for that.
And it, I can tell you, it did not sit very well in my stomach.
I was on the phone.
I was not aware of that it had not been paid.
As much as yesterday, trying to, with our accountant, trying to take care of it, see if we can do anything besides having another special town, so I'm trying to stay on top of it as much as I can.
I mean, every 14 days, my understanding, because I've already talked to an attorney about it, every 14 days, it has negative impact on your credit.
Does your attorney feel that a letter will help?
He stated that a letter would help, but it'll have to go through the trifactor of credit reporting, TransUnion, Equifax, and, there's a third one, I don't remember the name of it, but I have to submit to them. And the bad thing is that I requested credit, and now it's a negative.
A soft hit on me.
Yeah, that I got refused credit because of an outstanding bill of more than, it's over, over $2,000, I mean.
Can you follow up, today is Tuesday, can you follow up with Karen on Thursday? I'll call Pat Cantor myself tomorrow and follow up. We seem to have that history, you make the initial contact and I have to follow up with Pat Cantor. So I'll follow up tomorrow in the afternoon, and if you can follow up with Karen on Thursday.
It's kind of heavy when an employee of the town winds up giving a negative effect. I understand stuff gets lost, but then I wanted to.
But even getting, it was unacceptable that it got lost back in March as well.
My biggest concern on that is have we done an investigation into where my medical information went? My social security number's missing?
I don't think it was medical information, it was just a bill that.
Oh, no. My accident, my accident report went missing.
From this building?
Uh-huh, because I submitted with the other individual who was transported with me in the ambulance, which we, you know.
This must have been way back. When was this a lot back?
March 1st was the day of the, the beginning of March.
Are you familiar with any paperwork in the office?
I wouldn't have any paperwork on that.
It would just be in the Selectmen's office?
Because it was submitted to the Fire Chief.
It would have been gone through your office.
Well, he said he dropped it off in our office, but.
I.
The only thing we found was the bill, correct?
I turned in.
I came here in August, and I, the first I saw it was when I got a bill that was basically overdue, and then we started figuring out how to pay for it. By then, in August, it was too late to pay it because it had to be paid in fiscal 2014.
Right.
So we'll be trying to rectify it, but it did have to go to the town vote to be paid.
Because the initial event happened, transported to the hospital, came back, filled out the paperwork, received another form that had to be filled out, because it was the wrong form that was filled out initially. So I submitted one form, filled out another one, that was submitted, of which has my social security number, my personal information, any incident, and it's tied to that, tied to that medical part. From there, you can get all of my medical information. I have a huge problem with that breach, because I personally don't want my social security number floating around. Well, obviously, they can't get credit with it because I got denied.
Yeah.
And B.
We laugh because if we don't laugh, we cry.
It's aggravating. It's very upsetting. I chewed on my tongue for a while about it, and I finally decided I gotta do something. When I was told, "Sorry, sorry, Mr. Bemis, you have an outstanding bill that's in demand, we're not issuing you credit." I went, excuse me?
We tried as a board.
Many times that night.
Yep.
Many times.
Not even, not even at that meeting, but prior to the meeting, just by putting it on to take care of it.
Right.
And I tried yesterday to see if we could.
I read the meeting minutes.
For the special town?
Yep.
You can see it on YouTube. It was a circus, it was a joke.
It was. I can correct some of the information. I was a firefighter, I was a lieutenant, and I was operating as a firefighter, and as a lieutenant, on the scene of the accident, I was not an EMT. It did not, it was not incurred for the ambulance at all. That was Fire Department. Direct quote was, it was when I was working as an EMT.
No, but not from, not from my mouth. I saw the report, so I believe something, I don't want to get into it, but I know exactly what happened to you, so.
Yeah, it, it happened.
My issue was.
It was a rough night.
Was, was the double-dipping of the town of East Brookfield, and when I have the Fire Chief, who also serves in EMT, state that the town of Brookfield does it, I have no problem with taking money out of that fund to cover expenses.
Quite honestly, where the money comes from?
And exactly.
Mr. Chairman, I don't.
Because you have to understand, all of the money, all of the money, regardless of what account it is, is the town of Brookfield's money.
It's not a lot of money involved either.
So that's the saddest thing.
However, it had, just so everybody's aware, 74-point impact on my credit score since March.
Hopefully, the letter will help.
I'm hoping so, too, because, you know, I, I would like to be able to not, you know, go in somewhere and they'd be like, "Sorry, dude, you got an outstanding bill." What do you mean I have an outstanding bill? Well, this credit, this collection company is doing, like, I submitted all that paperwork.
With the discussion with Ms. Cantor, can we find out if the Harrington Hospital, because whoever that's who's bailing us, can remove this gentleman's name from the account, all individuals' names, and put the accounts into the town of Brookfield? Thank you.
They won't be able to do that.
We'll try.
They won't, because it's a medical, it's a medical bill tied to a medical, I don't think they can do that, because it's tied to my treatment.
They will do it if we don't ask, so.
Yeah.
Give it a shot.
Okay, as long as I can, I'll touch base with her.
On Thursday.
On Thursday, and then we can get a, a letter of some sort. We, I need something.
Chill.
Because I'm, I'm sorry, but not my fault that this happened, the, the board, somehow the town needs to correct the problem.
The manager, correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to address the board this evening? Mr. Hulcrum, you're welcome. Yes, sir.
How are we doing?
Not bad, just.
We discussed the security at the, the past special town meeting here. Despite a lot of negative political pressures there that night, and the security measures got voted down, I think you should move forward with them, and we have money in the Town Hall Improvement Account, even after the septic system comes out of that. And I think you should move forward, or consider moving forward to still doing something, especially changing the locks, more lighting, cameras, maybe the keypad. I'm not, I'm not too keen on that unless you do both doors, so if you would consider that, it'd be a good thing. Another thing at that meeting, I think the Board of Selectmen should insist and demand and expect that everyone from the financial team be at that meeting, no matter what. We didn't have the town accountant there or the treasurer, so I think they both should be there. It's definitely needed. As far as these medical bills go, the discussion, I think when the town employees go into the hospital, they should be telling the hospital that these are bills to be sent to the employer, which would be the town of Brookfield. I think that would solve a lot of problems.
Betty had informed me that the EMT and Fire are under a different.
Well, whatever, wherever they're supposed to go, they should go there. They should not go to the private names. I mean, they can be on the thing, but when you work for somebody, they ask you, the bills should go directly to the employer.
Betty was trying to explain to me that it's not a workers' comp issue, which I can't wrap my mind around. To me, it's.
Well, whatever the situation was, when you go into the hospital, they ask, is it, is it, is it work-related? And you didn't.
But we, we spoke to it with the special town, these individuals are not on the hook for it, the town of Brookfield, you know, legally.
Well, what are they under then? What are they under?
What do you mean? The town of Brookfield has to take care of it.
Right, but I mean, when they go into, when they, when they say they got hurt on their fireman or an EMT, what are they, they work for the town of Brookfield.
100%.
That's my point. So when they go in, they should say, "I work for the town of Brookfield," that's where the bills that'd be sent. I'm, I'm, I'm working for that company.
And the assumption, the assumption can only lie in the fact that you did do that?
I 100% did. I was in a structure here that said Brookfield Fire, when I was wheeled into the emergency room, the doctors took it off, said, "This is for the Fire Department." I said, "Most definitely."
For the town of Brookfield.
So when I signed the paperwork, it is your name, your medical record number. It is not the town of Brookfield's, because legally, the town of Brookfield has no access to anything tied to medical records. The bill is tied to that medical treatment, which is part of your medical records. So legally, the bill has to come to the individual first, it is then turned to the town, which all of them were. As soon as I got the first one, it went directly to the town. The ambulance billing goes through a private third-party billing, same as our towns does, and it takes time for them to get out. It isn't instantaneous that that bill had done. The hospital, I have no control over how long it takes for them to get it out. I don't know.
And I think they sent it to another town as well, which went.
Yeah, I, I just know when I've, anyone gets hurt with me, that comes right, comes right to me, or it goes to, you know, whatever company I've worked for in the past, it went whatever company I've worked for in the past, it went right to them. I never even seen the bill, you know? Another thing is the free cash, if we can have some kind of, when we have a special town meeting, um, if we can have some kind of a cash amount, I mean, we're almost in December, we had this meeting, and we still don't have a free cash amount. If there's somehow we can get to that point, at least have a figure when we're at that meeting, it would help.
We usually don't have a free cash amount at a special.
We should, at that late in the year, we should have something, at least a gauge, something to go by. It would be, it'd be a big help to us. Another thing is, um, these, these bills got, these bills got misplaced back in match.
I don't know the timeline of it.
Well, they got, they got misplaced between March and, when did you get the first bill? August?
I, this is the first bill when I, when I came into this position, which was in August.
Okay, so, so, so they, somewhere they, maybe we had a new administrative assistant back then, that, that person must've done something with them.
Well, we, with one of the new administrative assistants clerks, she had found an old bill in the filing cabinet.
She did find the old bill and I, and you know what, I'm gonna look at it and see if that, maybe that's your record you were looking for. I'm gonna look tomorrow, okay, see what we can come up with. Cuz there was some, there was some other information.
Shame, I mean, shame on me, I didn't take photocopies of them. When they came in, I saw what it was for. I turned it over to the fire chief immediately. And from there, my assumption was it was paid. And shame on me, we all know what happens when you assume. And it did.
Yeah, well, you shouldn't have to deal with it. Should've went right to the town somehow, you know?
Yeah, we agree.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to address the board? Item number two, town treasurer's report. Welcome in. Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to start out by saying that I read the article in the Telegram and Gazette after the November twenty-first town meeting, and it was disturbing to say the least. The comments made were not only an attack on my integrity, but also grossly exaggerated. No one who spoke at that meeting, with the exception of the selectmen and David Holcraft, has even approached me asking any type of questions. Whoever the reporter who spoke in regards to my refusal for a forensic audit is incorrect and should have checked with the appropriate parties before writing it. I have never refused a forensic audit, nor have I been asked my opinion on one. That would not be a decision for me to make. I am requesting a retraction on that comment. As far as the comments regarding my, my working sixteen hours per week and my education, the person, uh, that spoke is clearly the uneducated one with the facts. Instead of getting your information from social media or the local coffee shop, I suggest you get your facts in order before speaking. I have worked the twenty hours per week and have worked an additional seventy-nine and a half hours extra since April without any compensation. I have twenty-one years of successful municipal experience and expect to add Brookfield to that list. My work ethics and determination to bring the treasurer's office up to date is my goal. The twenty hours that's allotted to the treasurer's office are inadequate to complete a normal work week without the added backlog of tasks that have been neglected for many years. Anyone going into that office would be overwhelmed, and it is not surprising that things have fallen by the wayside. I have stated numerous times that it will take at least four years to bring the office up to date and running smoothly. One year has passed, and despite the issues that have plagued the treasurer's office, progress has been made, although it may not be as quickly as some feel it should. Reconciliation is a top priority to get the tax rate set and free cash certified for the two thousand and sixteen fiscal year. As far as tax title is concerned, there's four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in unpaid taxes, not eight hundred thousand as stated. Since being appointed.
Sandy, can you repeat that one more time?
Four hundred and seventy-three thousand.
That's what's delinquent right now in taxes.
That is delinquent at this point. Since being appointed, I have collected over fifty-seven thousand dollars and released five properties. I requested and received approval from the board of selectmen to hold the tax title sale. I pursued this immediately, contacting Talgate LLC. And after having several meetings discussing the sale, I then sent them a list of the properties that were available. I received back, twelve of the properties are of low land value. Twelve other parcels are listed with either different addresses or owner names, making them unsalable until the areas are found and corrected. In the past, the town has pushed to do foreclosures, not only to have, have they proved expensive, but fruitless. For example, the campground that's on Hobbs Ave had back taxes owed of two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. The town foreclosed on these parcels. Thousands were spent on attorney's fees. To date, this property cannot be auctioned at this time due, due to a historical question that has arose. I plan on giving a list of properties to be sold when the time, when the time comes to several key departments for their input, such as the board of selectmen, conservation, building department, historical, board of health, board of health, and the zoning board. These departments are well aware of the problems that may be present. Many things play a part in determining if the town, what is in the town's best interest to sell these properties. Large tracts of land, for example, that someone could build twenty-five to fifty homes, could the, could the schools support fifty to a hundred more children? It would tax every department in town. To have, the tax money would be nice. Looking at the big picture and seeing what impact it would have on the town should be a priority as well. Peter and Trudy O'Connell have given much time and energy in helping the collector and past treasurers with tax takings and tax titles. I welcome them both to meet with me if they choose to talk about moving forward and correcting the takings so that the tax titles can be sold. And I also urge anyone in tax title to contact me to, to discuss a payment plan to get your account up to date. The school's payroll. Issues arose with, with ten-month employee deductions. This has been resolved as of, uh, as of now. Speaking with the school's officials, communication was lacking on both parties. There were sixty-one employee, employed at the school. The issues were with six, not the entire school was stated. Ten-month employees in the past had more money taken out of their checks for health and dental, so they would be covered for the month of July and August while not working. A decision to continue this practice has yet to be made. Those involved will be notified in advance to plan accordingly. This would stop any future problems with a new treasurer coming in. Investments. Town, town meeting transfers have not been done for years. Working with the town accountant and several meetings with Dory Hewitt from Bartholomew to determine what needed to be updated. Four hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-two cents were transferred to the town's investment account. And one hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and five dollars and ninety-seven cents will be transferred to the general fund. The investment account is now up to date. This resulted in eight out of twenty-five accounts closed. Funds cannot be transferred or accounts closed without being reconciled and a paper trail made as to why it was done. I have taken two personal days off since November of two thousand and thirteen due to a death in my family. Four days for a much-needed vacation. And I give Barbara kudos for stepping up and saying something about the, uh, town meetings and all the backbiting that goes on. If everyone worked together, uh, and bring Brookfield back to a better, in a better light, instead of being a part of the problem, I think Brookfield would be better off. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just a quick question, Sandy, of the, uh, properties and tax titles. There's, you listed like twelve of them are just no good properties, unsalable, twelve we have the wrong information. How many are outstanding that are good pieces of property that we could do something with?
There was not very many. A lot of the properties are rundown and they're, they have no interest in purchasing these.
How many are we looking at, do you know?
There was twenty-five that were in tax title. And they have no interest in purchasing. And I, I don't believe it's in the town's best interest to do any foreclosures on these parcels. I suggested.
So you don't have any good properties that we can do anything, is what you're saying?
The properties that we did, that were viable enough to go up for sale, um, the people had paid off on those parcels.
So there's nothing outstanding worthwhile for the town to pursue, is what you're saying?
Very few. There may be two.
I believe a couple of them are in agreements already to pay. We approved a couple agreements for some properties.
Yes, and I do have another one that is, uh, coming in to make an agreement to.
So you got four hundred and seventy-three outstanding, uh, the campground's two hundred and thirty-three of that figure, so.
That is not included in that.
That, that's resolved. That two thirty is not included in that four seventy-three?
That campground has been foreclosed.
Okay, so four hundred and seventy-three thousand, there's really nothing else that we can look forward to getting, is what you're saying?
Well, there's something that.
Unless we can get these properties, I, I don't know.
Like the wrong information in the property with the wrong information. If we can straighten that out, we can pursue that then.
A couple of them were, were sold in the takings that we might not have legal stance on them anymore.
Some of the properties that, that are rundown, there's no one living in it?
Yeah, it's not even so much rundown, it's, you know, you're, you're into, you know, what's that property there? The oil spill.
Yeah.
Tracking down the heirs of these properties that have been abandoned, um, seeing whether or not there's a mortgage on the property.
Well, there's a misconception, misconception up there, that there's like a million dollars of.
That's, that's what she's, that's what she's here?
That we're not claiming, but that's obviously not the case.
Well, it's not, it's not only the amount of.
It's totally inaccurate.
That's inaccurate, it's, it's her lack of desire and ability to do it.
Well, I mean, just from what you're stating tonight, Sandy, the only thing that we can be looking at is basically is straightening out the twelve property with the wrong information. And going after the last couple of people that if they make, willing to come in for a deal, we can look forward to that. Uh, but as far as the rest of it, not too much, uh.
Doing some homework on trying to find, uh, the owners of these properties.
Yeah.
Whether or not the tax bills come back as undeliverable. And trying to find an heir if the property was, if the homeowner died and left it to someone in the family. It's just trying to track them down.
Now, these are going back many years, I take it, right?
It does go back.
Isn't there a statute of limitations?
Well, that's, some of the properties have passed though.
Which means they would be to the town?
No, as long as, as, as long as the properties are in tax title, the funds are secured for the town.
But we can't have access to them?
No, no, it's, but nothing can be done on that property because there's a lien at the registry of deeds. Uh, so unless somebody's willing to pay cash for the property, they can get away with, um, getting under the radar on paying the taxes.
And some of those properties, um, we've gone into executive session over, so. About a month ago with the tax collector. I don't know if you remember that.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not like we're doing absolutely nothing?
That's absolutely right. I, I was really stopped in my tracks on pursuing because that was one of the biggest things that I was planning on doing when I first came in, was getting the tax titles, getting the money that the town, uh, is owed. And it, it did help. We did get five properties paid off. Fifty-seven thousand is better than.
Zero.
Zero. And I am working with several other people. I do have another one on a payment plan. Uh, people were afraid to come in to, because of, because of having their property in tax title, whether they were embarrassed. Um, but, you know, rest assured, anyone that comes in to wanna talk about a payment plan, you know, it stays in my office. It doesn't go any further than that. And I'm more than willing to set up, call me, and we'll set up an appointment to me, come up with an agreement and, uh, that you could be happy with and the town can be happy with.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am.
Well, I'm sorry, Sandy, for all the misinformation and name-calling that you were victim to at the town meeting. No one should have to go through that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, and in regards, we don't have any questions for you anymore. Run, run now. Um, in regards to the forensic audit, do you have a prepared statement?
What are you doing?
To submit? Is this like a hearing, public hearing?
Oh, I'm gonna get that.
Um, the forensic audit was brought up in the newspaper. I have not read the article. A few people called me. The discussion was never a forensic audit. The discussion was bringing an accountant into that department to balance the books.
To balance the books, to help it, yeah, to get, to get the square one.
The town of Brookfield did have an audit in every department. So it's, it's not like we're trying to, uh, to hide anything. Any further discussion on that? Item number three, Lakeside Ave and Forest Street?
Yes, I, uh.
Did Mr. Esma wanna come up? Is he still here? Do I also? All right, Herb, did you wanna come up? No?
Why?
At our last meeting last week, you would volunteer to go down to Lakeside.
And I did go down and, uh, I, I did agree with, uh, Mr. Shafie's assessment of that, of those two roads. You need backfill. There's nothing there. There's holes there, large holes, and old asphalt, and there's like nothing to scrape up. So, uh, I agree with what he was saying. We do need, they do have to purchase backfill so we can spread it out for those two, uh, private roads.
All right, and this is a minutia as well, is that we have a policy for plowing and we have a bylaw for private road repairs. The disclaimers, the whole harmless is cited in the bylaw for repairs, not plowing. The policy recommends that we obtain those clauses, but it's not required. So there's, there's a little minutia there. I'm assuming that Lakeside and Forest were plowed the last time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then I think you're the unofficial unfortunate spokesman of those two roads.
Not Forest.
So Lakeside?
Yeah.
We had the discussion last week. Are, are you willing, is the road willing to bring some fill in to allow the highway department to spread it?
I have no idea. All I know is town, uh, state law says he has to plow the road. State law, doesn't matter if we bring fill in or not, state law says he has to plow the road. There's no, no question about repairing the road or anything, state law says. He brought a loader up on there the last time.
Did we contact him, be honest? We did. I, I thought it was resolved.
I thought so too.
She talked to you. She said there's no such thing as the six-year.
So town council is disagreeing with you, sir?
It's, it's on record, uh, five years ago when he did it, state law says he has to plow the road if he fixes the road. He fixed the road less than six years ago. It's on record.
Can you forward, is her opinion, it was like a two-page opinion?
He brought a loader up on the, on the road, uh, this last time, plowed it. How is that gonna affect? Ruining a loader, plowing the road with a loader. How does that hurt the loader?
I'm not, but, what if it's not a loader that next time though?
Mr. Shafie, did you wanna speak to that?
He's bringing a loader up there to do it.
Well, the reason that we had to bring the loader up there is the road's in bad condition. All right, normally we plow them with a small truck to get in and out.
You guys sent the letter November twelfth. How, how are you supposed to get everyone involved in this?
Well, we were, right, we were neglectful in that regard, absolutely.
It's, it's not, it's not even that. It's, it's the plowing doesn't require that form to come back to us. We can plow without that form. The repairs to the road require that form. Um, dated on November twenty-fourth, uh, from Patricia Cantor from Copeland and Page, we had, we sent over three questions. Number two, at our meeting last night, a resident, which I believe was yourself, we requested this information right after. Of one of the roads claimed, there was a law in effect that states, once a town maintains a private road, the town is obligated to continue maintaining it for six years.
Not maintaining it, plowing it. Not maintaining it. That's the big thing right there. If he maintains a road in six years, he has to plow.
What word is she using, Steve? Maintaining or plowing?
Maintaining. It's not maintaining, it's plowing.
I, I would argue that plowing falls into maintaining.
It's not, no, it doesn't. Plowing does not maintain a road.
All right, so we'll reach out for specific plowing mandates?
State law says if he maintains the road.
Well, now you're using the word maintain again.
It's, it's not, plowing is not maintaining a road. You don't plow a road in.
I would argue that plowing is maintaining.
The, the town does not maintain private ways, period. They plow private ways. We, we help out if the people petition the board of selectmen.
Right, and we, we set a policy because there's, there's private ways with our parks. There's private roads that haven't even been turned over to the town, that the town doesn't plow, that have very expensive houses on it that are paved.
Right. If, if, if it's up to me as a highway superintendent, we shouldn't even be on private ways.
You shouldn't be.
We shouldn't be doing anything on private.
Towns either, but.
All right, so can we, can we find the, um.
We wanna plow the private ways. We, you know that. We wanna plow the private ways.
But when you send a letter so far, and, and you don't even have all the houses on the road.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, as, as long as I'm on this board, I'm here for two more years, I'm not, I'm gonna argue that we don't send another letter out for plowing. Just strictly for maintenance.
It, that's, that's how you should be doing it. That's how it should've been, not. That's how you should be doing it. That's how it should have been done. It's for maintenance. And the people should have been notified that the roads are in poor condition. Before winter sets in, you got, you know, the people that own property on those roads have to get together and take care of it. The town will help out.
Well, that would be good if we got a letter in time, but...
It's, that's not my responsibility.
It came from your department.
It should have come from the board of selectmen.
Came from your department.
Should have come from the board of selectmen.
It came from us, right, Karen?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it said the highway superintendent went up there November 12th and surveyed the road, so November 12th is way too late.
Well, be ready for a letter in the springtime.
That's fine. If you get a letter in the springtime, it gives everyone an opportunity.
Well, it's just for repairs, in my opinion. I don't think we need that form for plowing.
Can I say something?
Definitely. That's why you're here.
People that do live on private ways, that the town is plowing the private ways, the people on those roads should be responsible of keeping those roads in halfway decent condition. Not the town of Brookfield coming down to remind the folks that live on the streets. It should be the people that live on the streets, drive on the streets every day of the week, should be trying to keep the roads in halfway decent condition.
I'm on one side of the road. My side of the road is great. There's nothing wrong with my side of the road. There's no potholes there. I fill the potholes and burn my house, so.
So that asphalt that's all washed out going down to Henry Allen Ave there, it's no problem?
It's been like that for fifteen years, that asphalt. It's been no problem for fifteen years. Now all of a sudden it's a problem.
It's progressively getting worse. People don't want to help out on your own private ways.
I'm debating if we want to read this, but we have to, we have to play with semantics of maintaining versus plowing. So let's take care of that and we'll put it on next agenda.
I mean, he's plowing it with a loader. It's not hurting the loader.
It's out of our way to run down there with a loader all the time.
When you have a plow in the area, they can just sweep it and be done with it.
The way he did, the first time he came up, they came up with a little truck.
And that's because we have a truck down in that neighborhood with a small truck that plows those small roads.
Well, he plowed it.
Last week with a truck?
Yeah. The truck came for us and the loader went second.
And did a lousy job of the whole thing. That's why we had to go back and do it with the loader.
The snow was a little bit too wet for small plowing.
It's not even the snow. The ground wasn't frozen yet.
Right, that...
More dirt than you are.
That's correct.
But I, getting into a different, I think we've addressed this one before with this, but again, I ask you to thank your guys for plowing.
We try to do as best we can.
But especially on Thanksgiving Eve and working into Thanksgiving morning, so if you didn't pass that along.
I haven't got that far yet.
Okay, I'm gonna pass it along again. Any further discussion, Mr. Thelma?
No.
No. All right, so we'll get that from Pat Kanter.
So it's still gonna be plowed until?
Still gonna be plowed.
But the desire of this board?
I don't know. I know what the desire is, but it's too late in the season to do anything right now.
I disagree. If you get signatures and get a load of, I think it's gonna take a couple loads.
What kind of material do they need, Herb?
They need to get something that's not gonna turn to mud.
Well, we got, you recommended the last time.
The wrap and stuff.
The barn, so that all washed out. You purchased the, you had the barn come up and dump it.
It's gonna wash out regardless unless you put a top coat on it. That's just a temporary surface.
Dirt roads, everybody has to maintain dirt roads.
They erode.
I'm constantly going up to East Main Street maintaining that section of dirt road. I wanted to pave that road years ago and I was told no. So I gotta constantly go up there and maintain that dirt road all the time. So if the town has to maintain their own dirt road, the people that live on their own private roads that are dirt, they should be maintaining it. I just had a dirt road that people live on. They called, they asked questions. They turned around and paved their dirt road because they're sick and tired of being washed out and everything all the time.
Well, I don't know how we can get the work done this winter. I mean, it's cold now.
It's not gonna get done this winter.
I can't see it getting done this winter, to tell you the truth.
And with these roads that are being that difficult, if they're in that rough a shape, they're gonna be the last roads that get plowed at the end of the storm, unfortunately.
All right, so we'll address it next week in regards to plowing versus maintaining semantics. Thank you, sir.
Do you have anything else for me while I'm here, or?
Good luck number seven.
No.
We don't need that for that, right?
I think that's good. Thank you, sir.
Bye, man. That was it.
Item number four, public cable access, a discussion. Thank you. Unfortunately, due to that special town meeting, I personally received a few complaints. My administrative assistant received a few complaints in regards to the social media aspect of posting the town meetings on Facebook and YouTube. They post on Facebook as well, correct?
I have nothing to do with Facebook.
Links, out there links?
Not on, we don't have a webpage, so I can't tell you that. Maybe the town, the town website does.
You and I had a personal discussion in regards to that. Me personally, I'm not opposed to it. I think, you know, the more information that people have, the better, more educated they're gonna be. So the floor is yours, sir.
So, do we have a complaint from the board also?
Me personally, I, I'm not opposed to putting it on YouTube.
I'm not either.
Nick, what about Linda?
I can't speak for her. Did she mention anything to you, or?
I don't know. You'll have to talk to her.
All right, she's not gonna be here for the next couple of meetings.
Okay.
Maybe you can give her anyways. Give her a call personally, or?
I'd rather not. I'd rather not. If she wants to talk to me, here's the place to do it.
I agree.
Because I don't want it to be a he said, she said kind of a deal. Okay? Well, first of all, I'd like to say is, I'm gonna ask a question. Just tell me a yes or no answer. Steve, are you aware that there's a camera here?
Yes.
Okay. Nick, are you aware there's a camera here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Open meeting law states that a camera, if it is at a meeting, the operator can videograph anything at that meeting and do what they please with the file, tape, however way it's getting, getting videographed. As long as the people in the meeting know that there's a camera there. So you already acknowledge that the camera's here, the camera's always over there.
So playing devil's advocate, if someone came to a microphone in a heated discussion and failed to recognize that there's a camera there, what's their recourse?
The camera's in plain sight. If the camera's out of sight, I can't tell you that, but for our camera, it's always in plain sight. As you know, that's where it is all the time. At other meetings, it's always in plain sight. At the town meeting, it's always in plain sight. When I'm doing it, I like to be about halfway in the middle. This way I can cover a lot if I have to, but everybody sees with the camera there, and the camera operator. And according to the open meeting law, which is what I just said, it is actually on page 22, section E. If anybody wants to look that up. I just kind of said it in an English kind of wording. Also too, is at the beginning of August, I requested to be put on the select board's agenda, if you remember, which was the August 19th meeting. And I did explain, I outlined BCM's, Brookfield Community Media's kind of like vision, what we're gonna do. And I did talk about the YouTube. And I did hand out to each one of you this pamphlet. And it is on the second page, what we were gonna do. It's actually the last, second to the last paragraph. So since then, we've uploaded eight videos so far, okay? And I want to say that the viewership has been going very well, I have to say. As of December 1st, which was yesterday, there's 233, I'm sorry, there's eight videos. Out of the whole total eight, it's been viewed 233 times. The YouTube account has been hit over 600 times, just to give you some statistics. And it is growing daily. Maybe in incrementals, but it's still growing. So what it's doing is it's giving us another avenue to get to the people. Right now in the town, I have roughly a thousand charter subscribers that can actually see it on TV, okay? So I'm trying to reach out to the roughly 2,000 more because we have roughly about 3,000 here in town, residents. So by doing the library and the YouTube video, that's given us that opportunity to get out there.
So you've heard it from us, we're not opposed to it. I just, I don't want you to have resentment or try to shoot the messenger.
I personally don't have resentment, however, the conversation you and I had, and I wished that Linda was here to ask me those questions.
What are you upset about?
I'm not upset. What I'm, I'm concerned that public officials are making, again, like the town meeting, making statements. But I don't know what the statements are yet because only what Steve had told me that Linda was a little upset because of some YouTube videos. Now, the camera picks up a lot of things. Also adds 10 pounds to you. But...
We don't like that, do you?
Neither do I. I mean, I probably look like I have 200 pounds right now. You know, and as I do these videos more and more, we're improving as we go along. As you can see, this is the second meeting, there's no microphones on the table. We're using boom mics now. These boom mics are picking up everything, which is the same setup I had at the town hall. Picks up everything. I was hearing cell phones going off. That's how sensitive these are. So if people are talking, the camera's gonna pick it up. So I'm also kind of a little upset a little bit that on Wednesday, I happened to go on my town government website to look at the upcoming meeting so I can kind of schedule what I have to do, and of course Sharon makes up the schedule for programming. So I happened to notice that on the agenda, we were here. So I called Karen to find out why, because nobody said anything to me and she didn't know. So she said to reach out to you, which I did.
Well, to be honest with you, the discussion between you and I, the board and yourself, wasn't really necessary. I put it on the agenda personally because I wanted to have the discussion by the board, the legality of it. You've answered it before. We had to expend any money, in my opinion, through town council, so.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to YouTube. I'm not.
Then why am I here?
You chose to be here.
I didn't choose to be here. I was asked to come here. It was put on the agenda.
It was put on the agenda. We didn't ask you to come.
And if I didn't call you, or Karen, I almost said Linda, but if I didn't call either one of you, I wouldn't have known. I do not like coming to meetings unprepared.
Like I said, there was no desire to have this conversation. It was a board discussion of what we felt the galli through the town because lawsuits don't come to you, they come through this board.
True, true.
Of what we're gonna do about it. I'm glad you reached out to me, and I guess that was all I said.
Well, I was, like I said, a little confused. Why? Why I'm asked to come here?
Again, it was on the agenda. There was no invitation.
All it said was public access. And as of this morning, the agenda was changed again. Now it says discussion.
Because we had a complaint from Ms. Mahoney that these agendas violate the law. This was a broad discussion, and as far as I'm concerned, we're in compliance with the law.
Okay, well, that's something you can take up with her because...
I'm all set with it.
You know, I really don't want to go there anyways.
Nor I, but that's the answer for why the words discussion were placed on it.
Okay. So we will still continue to do what we're doing?
I'm not opposed to it. And if Linda wants to, if Linda wants to readdress it, she can ask Karen to put her on the future agenda.
Absolutely. Because I've done my homework, and as you can see, I compare.
Well, my question was, was there any case law in regards to any complaints?
Not to my knowledge. Not to my knowledge. And I've gone through the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law Guide, and that's what it states on page 22.
And that was gonna be the discussion, was if the board wanted to seek legal town council to protect people that are complaining. And I'm glad it wasn't just me that received the phone calls, the office, you know, me personally.
Linda, I didn't want to speak for her, but she did express concern.
Well, she expressed concern at the special town meeting, sitting next to me, about the YouTube videos.
Correct. But she knew what was going on. As all three of you did.
We had that discussion.
She may have forgotten. Well, you don't forget something like that. I mean, you three knew what was going on. So does everybody else. So did everybody in the audience in August when I presented this.
But when we get complaints, we have to deal with them.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I like to be known about the complaints, especially if it's my committee.
And again, it wasn't a desire to have a conversation with you. Don't get me wrong, I'm glad we are. It was a discussion through the board on what we wanted to do. And from what I'm hearing, it's nothing.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Did I answer questions, or?
I answered questions. My only question was the case law issue.
Page 22, section 8.
Thank you.
Open meeting law.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question?
Most certainly.
Does it make sense at either a board of selectmen meeting or at a town meeting that is being videotaped, that whoever's chairing that committee or that meeting announced to everybody that it is being taped, so that everybody knows? Does that, does that make any sense?
That's a very good point. That can be done. Some towns do that. A lot of towns do not do that.
Yeah, I don't think legally it's required.
No, no, it's not. But it would be a good idea to do that.
Knee-jerk reaction. I'm not a fan to it. About half the people in this room came in late. So any announcement wouldn't benefit any of those people.
It's just a question.
But I would agree, when you walk into a room, people pick up the fact that there's a camera in the room.
Correct.
Especially when they're about to go in.
And they also act differently when there's a camera in the room.
100%. And it's intimidating. Public speaking on its own is intimidating, let alone the fact that there's a camera in your face.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. But it is something that we could, I could suggest to the moderator at the next town meeting, just to make that point, so everybody knows, reassured. So as of this meeting, now after, when I go and edit, I'm gonna be putting in a, like a short sentence at the beginning now that states, you know, there's always a camera there and so forth. So everybody's all clear. Which is fine because I already did, again, I did my research. Some towns do that, some towns don't. I think we're gonna do that. Just so we know.
Your discretion. I personally wouldn't do it. I think it's a waste of your time.
I'm there anyways. What's another slide?
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All set?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Item number five, local public access advisory committee, discussion, again, this is a discussion for the board. I think Ms. Wilson reached the topic of a special town meeting going awry. We've had a committee that's been in place for a little over three years now. And I was completely surprised by the fact of Article 2 taking the $10,000 that was requested out of the board of selectmen's account into a special account.
Yeah.
So I don't know what you feel about this committee and...
Well, the charges to, what are they charged with? They're charged with negotiations.
The charge shall, cable TV advisory committee shall advise the board of selectmen in negotiation of renewals of cable licensing agreements between the board of selectmen, the issuing authority, and the franchise of franchises. Advise and assist the board of selectmen in monitoring compliance with all aspects of the cable contract agreement. Receive and evaluate citizens' complaints, concerns, suggestions concerning cable service, compliance with the agreement, and other aspects of cable television service. Meet with the board of selectmen from time to time, but at least biannually, to advise the board of matters concerning service, compliance, and regulatory climate, and other matters of relevance to cable subscribers. Submit an annual report of activities to be included in the annual town report. Conduct an annual public hearing to review citizens' concerns, complaints, suggestions regarding all aspects related to cable television in the town of Brookfield. Insofar as a cable licensing agreement, agreements allow, allows, cable TV advisory committee shall advise the board of selectmen regarding rates charged to subscribers. Conduct all of its activities pursuant to all relevant federal, state, local laws and regulations, including but not limited to the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, Massachusetts Public Record Law, or Massachusetts Conflict of Interest Law.
I don't see them doing a lot of that stuff.
I would agree 100%.
May I approach, please?
Certainly.
Thank you. First of all...
First of all, I had a meeting with your board, all three of you, in which I gave a detailed report of what we have been trying to do for the past two years. I did this, I would like not to be interrupted, please?
Well, that's nice, but I'm gonna ask you a question. And this meeting was the same meeting that we extended the contract a year, because the committee in two years had done nothing to negotiate a contract that they knew was gonna expire two years prior to that, correct?
That's correct, and I also gave you a whole list of reasons why that happened, and you accepted my explanation. You expressed sympathy for the constraints we were under. You expressed support for moving forward, and you said that you and your board would do everything to help. Now unfortunately, none of this was on camera, but it did happen, Steve. So you're expressing surprise that our lack of action surprises me.
I'm not expressing surprise. It's been three years. I made notes, you ain't known the fact.
And I also, again, told you the constraints we were under, and part of the reason I went before the town, asking for money for our legal help, which you also know the fact of, is because we could not move forward on negotiations without having legal help. Now, for you to come up here and talk about my committee, without informing me the nature of the discussion, and I might add, echoing what Jim said, writing "Public Advisory Cable Access," or however you put it on the agenda, let me see, Local Public Access Advisory Committee Discussion, that does not record, that does not satisfy the requirements of the Open Meeting Law.
In regards to my opinion, it does. It's a discussion between the board of selectmen in regards to this ad hoc committee.
You have a right to...
You were not invited to this meeting, because it was a discussion by the board. We welcome you for your input.
Well, Steve, let me read you what the Open Meeting Law says. In fact, I will quote directly from the Attorney General's, so that there'll be no mistake about it.
I read your email last week.
Steve, let me quote directly from the Attorney General.
For whose purpose, Sharon?
For informational purposes.
I read it already.
Did you read section 2903 Notice Posting Requirements?
I read your entire email.
Then I would like to read it for this assembly, if you don't mind.
I somewhat do. You're starting to waste our time.
I don't consider it a waste of time to let the people watching this video, and the people in this hall, know exactly what was...
In regards to a selectmen's meeting and the agenda that's posted, yes, it is a waste of time, Sharon.
Steve, why do you object to this? It's informational, it's important. Requirements applicable to all public bodies. Meeting notices shall be printed or displayed in a legible, easily understandable format, and shall contain the date, time, and place of such meeting, and a listing of topics that the chair reasonably anticipates will be discussed at the meeting. The list of topics shall have sufficient specificity to reasonably advise the public of the issues to be discussed at the meeting. Now, the exact listing on this agenda reads as follows, and most of you have it in front of you, but I will read it for the camera. Local Public Access Advisory Committee-Discussion. I submit to you, that is not a topic, that is not an issue. It is simply a description of the fact that you are going to talk about something unspecified. Steve, when I sent you my email, I asked you for a specific description of what this discussion was going to be. You did not return my email, despite the fact that I asked you to contact me.
Well, the email required...
May I finish, please?
No, no, when you make an accusation...
I am describing what happened, I have not...
You asked a question, and I'm going to answer it. If you are not going to have a civil discussion, I will ask you to sit back, and you can... You are so passive aggressive, Sharon, it's not even funny.
I resent any importation.
I do not care. Do we understand this? Yes, and for the people that would like to go on and find out the passive aggressive individual as Ms. Mahoney, go onto Facebook, because it's beautiful. It speaks beautifully to what Ms. Wilson states.
That is not your main to this discussion, Mr. Chair.
It most certainly is.
Is that why I...
Your fearless leader is not afraid of your passive aggressiveness, Ms. Sharon Mahoney. Do we understand this?
Is that the reason we're having this discussion?
It most certainly is not.
Because of something I said, then why are you bringing it up, Ms. Sharon?
I'm bringing up the fact, which I stated in my initial conversation with this board of selectmen, is that I do not have faith, in the past three years, that this committee is doing anything.
Mr. Comtois, why is this...
And when we allocate $10,000 and put that fiduciary responsibility into your hand, which the town did, I have great concern with that. Do we understand each other?
I understand you perfectly, Mr. Comtois.
No, you assume what you understand, and you're being passive aggressive again, you're being shrewd, you're being condescending, and it's offensive. And I am quite honestly sick and tired of it.
What is offensive, Mr. Comtois, is that you're not letting me talk to my side of this issue.
Is there anything else that you would like to add, in regards to what we've stated?
Well, I already spoke in terms of the Open Meeting Law. I did not get, you did not answer my email, I did not get any...
So that was the point before this runaround became. I went into the office Monday morning, and I requested Karen, because the email stated either yourself or your administrative assistant respond. My administrative assistant responded.
Yes, and she...
Next problem.
And her comment to me was, the discussion is going to be about the committee, we are going to discuss the committee, those are her exact words.
And that's what we're doing.
That is not a topic or issue.
It is a topic. This topic is the Cable TV Advisory Committee.
Then what, no, the topic is my actions, as you have said several times.
It's the committee's actions. If you want to take this personally, you most certainly can do that.
Then why did you bring up Facebook? You brought up my response on Facebook about something that has nothing to do with this. You're the one who brought it up.
Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, I would like to cut to the chase here, and know what action you're going to take about my supposed neglect of the work that I have done with my committee.
Well, that's what we're gonna talk about.
Then go ahead.
And for the people out there that have a copy of this, that Ms. Mahoney pointed out, Local Public Access Advisory Committee Discussion, and that's what we're trying to do. Is there anything else that you'd like to add to this discussion? Anything else?
I'm willing to answer the questions the board may have.
I don't have any questions for you, ma'am. Any questions for us anymore?
I may have others, yes.
All right, so Mr. Thunwell?
I'm all set with Sharon. Oh, you're gonna stay there?
Why not?
I don't care. I'm not opposed to it either.
So your opinion?
Well, my opinion is, after three years, it's very, there's been a little activity going on with this new contract, which I'm really concerned with.
Oh, 100%.
And that's my biggest thing. There's no activity on, going on with this, and this reminds me of the zoning bylaw committee, when there was very little activity going on with them, and we had to revamp them.
It still is, there's still no activity.
I know, but we revamped it.
I think we've met, they've met once.
But the point is...
There's two members, have you met once, since we revamped?
I had no idea we could revamp.
The bylaw committee, Ms. Wilson, Mr. Holkra, have you met once?
Sorry.
Once. You know, I mean, we were proactive in that.
It is what it is.
We were proactive in that. And I think this is another case of that we might have to be proactive with revamping this committee, because things aren't getting done. That's my concern. Negotiation with the cable, I think the contract ended initially, what, three, four years ago?
No, about a year ago.
A year ago?
Less than a year.
No, but weren't we getting one-year extensions all the time?
We filed for a one-year extension, it was a 10-year contract.
Right.
We filed for a one-year extension.
We only did that one time.
Yeah.
All right. No negotiations yet, started?
We had a public hearing, that was a...
Yeah. Well, cable access is important, I mean, it's important that we get this contract signed, and...
Well, not even signed, started.
Well, it would be, ideally, to get it started and signed, but it's not happening very quickly.
I know there's two other members, would you wish to speak to this? If you do, I'd...
I'd like to say this about the whole, what you got, what you just talked about, with in regards to not having any meetings, and I think I've been on, I was appointed to the board three years ago, and almost right from the get-go, I kept asking, how come we're not having any meetings? And I just never really heard from anybody about it, so, you know?
So, that's a concern. That's a concern. No, no activity. To get things accomplished, people have to be proactive, take the initiative, and run with it. And I don't see that happening with this, right now.
My concern is the trigger for Article 2 was the $10,000. I do not trust Ms. Mahoney guiding that $10,000 in the best interest of the town of Brookfield.
Well, that's a concern.
It is for me.
Yeah. I wish Linda was here, so we can have...
Tell her, she's not.
No, I know.
It is what it is, again.
Yeah. Anyways, so I don't know what to say, right now.
My desire is to disband said committee, and have the selectmen contact Copeland Page, they have an attorney right through there, to get a contract going. Through the public hearing, through the minutes, there are potentials to get money for the department. I believe we can work with the chair to find out what's in the best interest for that group, of what we can obtain, and I think through council, the advisory as well.
So we take over the negotiations with KMP?
Well, not supposed to take over, we would begin the negotiations.
Right, yeah, yeah. And then they could help us out with the legal...
They're gonna assist regardless.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Well, I'd like to get this going, to tell you the truth. I want to get this going, this is a...
I do not have faith in the leadership of, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're the chair of this said committee?
I think you're aware of that, Steve.
Since day one?
Yes, I think you're aware of that.
I wasn't aware of day one, no.
Steve, we had a meeting with the select board at the time, and at that time, the committee was made up of you, Peter O'Connell and Rudy Heller. I came to you, and I said...
I was ever on that committee.
You were on the committee, because I came to you, and I said, do you want to do this, or do you prefer to turn it over to other people? And the three of you unanimously said you wanted to turn it over to other people. And at that point, I was elected chair. You were aware of that. And if I may also say, I deeply resent the implication that I would misuse town money. I think this whole thing is driven by the fact that I altered, I revamped the warrant article after this board had changed it from my initial draft that I submitted on behalf of this committee. I successfully argued for my version of the town floor, which was what, the one I was going to submit, had you not changed it before the warrant, without this committee's knowledge.
Can we stop this fairly?
And I think that is what is driving...
The animosity here is just getting out of control.
I am just wanting to get the facts out there.
That's not, that's not the...
And if you had concerns about this, prior to this, you should have come to me, instead of airing it after a town meeting in which I won a successful vote. I think the timing here is very suspicious.
You know, I think maybe we do need a change. I really do. Because the animosity that's coming out of the chairman's voice right now is too much.
I think my concerns are valid, and I think they've been earned, sir.
I don't think you can be effective anymore, seriously.
You haven't been to any of the meetings, sir, so how do you know that?
From what you're saying, I don't think I have to be. And we're not having meetings. From what I'm hearing, there's no meetings to attend.
We have had meetings, sir, look on mytowngovernment.org. They have been posted, minutes have been posted, they are there for everybody to see. I resent the mischaracterization of our town.
Maybe we do need a change. I think we do need a change. Absolutely.
So entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion gladly.
Certainly.
Put my two cents in. I just want you to really think about what you may do, is, first of all, you cannot use Copeland and Page. They don't have a track record with charter negotiations. And you can ask them, and they're gonna tell you, okay? Not a winning track record, but a track record for negotiations, they don't have it. Top of my head, I can't think of the other lawyer that...
Epstein and August.
Epstein and August, August. That's the attorney that you want to go with. First off, they have a winning track record, and a very good track record, of getting negotiations started and completed, okay? Number two, really think about what you're gonna hopefully not do, is, this is gonna fall on me.
How?
Well, you're gonna ask me to...
Make recommendations.
Make recommendations, which I don't mind doing, however, I see...
But I believe those recommendations would have been asked by said committee, as well.
And they were, and I did present some already. However, I see this going a little bit further than just giving recommendations. I have my hands full now, and you're putting more on my plate, so to speak.
I promise you that it will not, the only thing that I will inform from you are recommendations from what we can incorporate into a contract that will facilitate anything to that organization.
Well, the negotiations are more than just having a lawyer, and two lawyers go at it, and you guys just signing off. There's a lot more to that, and it can be lengthy. That's why you have to be very careful on what you're gonna do, okay? I myself have done my homework through other cable stations, so that's my, kind of like, two cents here, is, yeah, Sharon's group has been a little bit dormant for a little while, but they're coming back. I've already been to one, or maybe even two meetings that I can think of right now, to participate a little bit. One, I gave in my recommendations where I'd like to see the studio to go. So my only thing is, if this is an issue, why wasn't this issue brought up a couple weeks ago, when you guys were going through all the warrants for the town hall? I mean, I would have thought, I mean, a town meeting, I'm sorry, I would have thought, you know, that would have been...
The warrant that was presented to the town, and I did not alter it, I don't...
I'm not, no, no, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about...
But that's what I'm talking about, is that $1,000.
No, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about when the three of you were here at a select board meeting, and you were going through the warrant for the town meeting. Why wasn't it brought up then? The issue now, that's what I'm asking.
In regards to the $10,000?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
I lost faith through that town meeting.
So the town meeting kind of tilted you the other way, so to speak?
And it was an executive session, where we had the discussion to extend the contract.
Yeah.
And I had doubts of where we were going for the past two years, nothing had been done.
Well, to be honest, this is the first I'm hearing about that, okay?
It's been three years, and we've had one public hearing, as far as I'm concerned, and I don't believe that got us anywhere. Everybody was more worried about what their cable rate was going to be.
Oh, and that's...
And there's nothing that that contract's gonna do about it.
And every town goes through the same thing. And that's the first thing people want to say, is why do I have to pay so much? That's just a common question that comes up all the time. All I want to say is, just, please think of everything before you make a decision.
I've given this a lot of thought, Jim. You have to understand that I've been negotiating contracts for about a decade in the town of Brookfield, through the school committee, through this board of selectmen, so I'm not naive, I'm not wet behind the ears in regards to contract negotiations, and Mr. Thunwell has negotiated contracts as well.
Well, and again, I'm saying that the negotiations are more than just the board signing off.
Well, we understand.
The negotiations are between the lawyer that you have, and charter's lawyer, and charter representatives also. So everything is kind of like copacetic. I'm aiming high, hopefully I get in the middle. That's all I'm shooting for. And I would hope, and please let me finish, and I would hope that you take that in advisement, because I'd like to see that happen. If I get high, that's great, but I'm kind of thinking it's gonna go in the middle someplace.
So if this vote goes through, I would appreciate if you could forward over any recommendations that you have to Karen, so we can start the ball rolling.
If that's what you want, sure.
I know that if I was on a committee for three years, that basically only had one public hearing, did the issue with me.
Well, I can't speak because I wasn't here, because I had to leave for two years because of a job issue. That's why I had to resign from cable access, but that's been resolved. I'm back. Came back in June and we're off and running. So they're right behind me.
And we've had this discussion, I'm glad that you're back and I appreciate it.
Well, that's beside the point. I'm happy to be, I'm happy to be back because that is important for this town.
Absolutely. And the contract's very important for this town.
Absolutely, that's why...
And we're not getting it done right away.
That's why I need you guys to really think about, don't make a harsh decision now. Really think about this whole thing, because it's not just signing off. And I understand what you're saying, that you've had contract negotiations, you're both probably well versed than I am, but it's more than that. And hiring the right lawyer is gotta be top priority. It has to be.
I'll have the conversation with KMP tomorrow, Epstein and August. I have known it.
Okay.
Well, it hasn't been voted yet, though.
Well, I know. Just speaking to you.
I would recommend that you also talk with Linda present, too. I'd go on record and say that not just you two make that decision. This way, it's a more even vote, however way it goes.
Well, if it's a unanimous vote now, then her voice would be a dissenting vote.
That's not how I see it.
To be honest with me, I don't think she'd sway me.
That's not how I see it. We don't know that. It's speculation. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Thoma?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to suspend the committee. The Cable, Public Cable Access Advisory Committee.
Cable TV Advisory Committee.
Cable TV Advisory Committee.
I will second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Item number six, police safe surplus. We have a safe at the police station. I reached out to a locksmith about a month ago to see if we could get rid of that. They had no interest or desire in it. The safe form, I was acquired about three or four years ago. I think it was a free safe. It's in the booking room currently. A large safe, I wanna say it's around three or four feet by maybe around four or five feet.
Does he want it? Does he like one?
It's, I don't think it's ever been used since it was brought there. When there is a shift in the, the new location, the landlord has specifically stated that that has to be repolished. So I was trying to be proactive to see if a company would want it. Nobody wants it. So what I'd like to do is declare a surplus, see if any other entities within the town want it.
Yeah, let's ask around.
And if they don't...
How much does the thing weigh?
It's heavy.
A couple hundred pounds of?
More than that. I think it could be dolled out, though. I measured it quickly, I think it'll fit through the door. But if, if nobody else wants it within town, once we put it in surplus, then we'll go out to municipal to see if anybody out there wants it.
Yeah, let's get rid of it.
For the dollar amount of a dollar. So entertain said motion.
So moved.
Place of the surplus, if nobody else within the town wants said safe, it'll go onto municipal. Second, any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Karen, it is an S H W A B.
Yeah.
Fire guard, model number three six six zero A N.
A N, I see.
Yep. So that'll be somewhat specific when it goes out to bed. We voted on that?
Yes, we did.
We voted on, took the vote, all in favor?
Yeah.
Item number seven, permission to use town roads for moving the house. Mr. Holcraft, who is going to be moving the house, needs permission through his movers to move said house through the town streets. He's gone through Mass DOT to get their permission, he's waiting for that. But he's saying the end of December, beginning of January is your move date, and he doesn't wanna hold it up. Sent this through KMP. He provided somewhat of a letter, I don't know if you saw it in the selectmen's office.
I haven't seen that yet, no.
All right, it's back there. I refused to sign it because it was very broad, there was no...
No start date or anything like that?
Well, it's not the start date, it's, you know, if you wanna read Pat's letter, it's basically, there's no liability listed, there's no insurance listed, all these things that need to be there to protect the town. Mr. Holcraft and I had the conversation yesterday. Her opinion, to avoid delay, the board may wanna consider voting to authorize a chairman with the approval of town council to sign a revised vision of the permission to use the town streets and roads to move the proudy house.
I can, I can live with that.
So entertain said motion.
So moved.
I will second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Setting of meeting dates, we only have, what, one more meeting scheduled? And that's a sixteen?
That's a sixteen, right.
We don't wanna meet on the thirtieth, do we?
No, January.
So we'll meet on the sixth?
Six is good, too.
Have you asked Linda what her schedule was?
No, I didn't, last night, she called my number, so I didn't get a chance to.
Do you wanna schedule these tentative to hers?
Yeah.
Well, should I do it on the sixteenth, when you put my...
She's not gonna be here next week, she stated.
I'll get her schedule.
I'd rather do it now. The sixth, the twentieth of January? Yes, no? And the third, the seventeenth of February?
Seventeenth might be an issue with me.
Is that school vacation week?
No, it's Key West week.
So let's just do, let's just do January.
Stay till, yeah, stay in, yeah.
Let's just stay with January.
Yeah.
So the two dates in January were the, what, sixth and twentieth?
Sixth and twentieth.
So entertain said motion.
So moved.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, let's go through the four.
Oh, I'm gonna go when you're ready, I got another.
Mr. Blaze had sat before this board in regards to the, his desire to have the property cleaned next to him, stating that was a zoning infraction. We met with him, we stated that once the foliage falls, contact the board again. He did. We forwarded that complaint to our ZDA, ZOE, zoning enforcement officer. His response is that you can inform the board of selectmen for me that I will not be pursuing any violation on the Brookfield Motors property based on Mr. Blaze's letter. Reason, the business was in place prior to our bylaws being enacted in 1987, at his grandfather. In addition, although Mr. Blaze mentions several items still in storage, that is not how I view this. Any person can have a dumpster on their property for any length of time and they do not need to place a fence or planting to block it from the, from view of neighbors. The wiring is being used as part of the business, it is not any long-term storage. The junk or unregistered cars comes under general bylaws and is the responsibility of the police department. This charge was made back in 2009.
No, I agree with that.
If Mr. Blaze feels he needs to pursue this matter further, I would recommend he does this as a civil matter, which would be his dime and not the town's.
I think that, I think we should forward this information to the chief of police, so he can investigate that.
Can we also forward this opinion to Mr. Blaze?
Oh, yeah, sure.
So can we forward this to both parties? And please ask for a response from the chief of police in regards to Mr. Simeoni's issues with the unregistered cars. Any further discussion?
No, this is not enough.
So if he brought this before the ZBA, do you wanna make a statement now, or...
No, I'd rather wait till the, until he brings it...
Which that would be his only alternative because our zoning enforcement officer feels that he's not in violation.
I know. But he can appeal that decision, so to us, yeah.
Entertain a motion to approve the wage authorization. This always throws me. I'm gonna say to Ms. Trainer.
Yeah.
Because I don't know how to pronounce that last name, and I would destroy it. So I went to, and according to Ms. Trainer, Ms. Lincoln had looked at this.
Yeah, it was fine.
Tried to do this a couple other times, she had not had the opportunity to do so. She claims that it's fine, and she actually did sign it.
Yep, she signed it.
And it's meaningless with just one signature, so...
I'll make a motion. We need a motion.
We do.
I'll make a motion.
I will second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Your other, sir?
Going back at a special town meeting, fiasco. When the board of selectmen brought up several articles to benefit the town, they were soundly defeated by a small group of people that did not represent the entire town.
Well, what disturbed me was that a couple of the people working in this town hall, and they're the ones that brought up the issues right away.
Right.
A lot of the correspondence, as Ms. Wilson stated, basically said that there's no transparency in this board, especially in regards to that situation. We've had several meetings, open meetings, taped meetings in regards to this issue. We wanna talk about politics and playing politics. I'd like to believe I don't play politics, I like to look at both sides of the issues. For people to shoot down a camera article because I personally didn't have an answer to who was gonna watch the videotapes is unacceptable to me. We had the discussion, we did not know who was gonna watch it, that's not a reason to shoot down the whole project.
I'm concerned with the security of the town hall and the employees. That's my concern. And I'd like us to get the cameras set up. We don't, I think this board can, is authorized to do it. I think we have an obligation to do it. And I wanna see it get done. I think the majority of the people support that. I've spoken...
The majority on the floor did not.
No, no, right, I'm talking about the entire town. I've spoken, I speak to people all the time, I'm asking for their opinions all over town. And in this regard, hundred percent, thought it was a great idea. Every single, and I spoke to maybe, I'm guessing, maybe thirty people. I'm, you know, just going through town, just running into...
None of them were at the meeting?
No. That's the sad part, no.
Where do you stand on the two other issues?
I think the panic alarms, I think that's an overkill, that's more, it's a little bit more costly because there's a monitoring fee on that. That's my concern with that. And I think, I don't think it would be used correctly. A panic, I think if, for example, if someone has a disk green with somebody, I can see someone hitting a button, hitting a button.
But if it only goes to our police department...
Well, it's still gonna respond, but...
But what's the issue?
That's why I'm not in agreement with it. I don't think, I think it's an overkill, actually. I think, I like the idea of, I love the idea of cameras.
To be honest with you, I'm on the fence with cameras, I don't know if that's an overkill. We had, we had our, we had our EMT chief approach, was it you or somebody else in regards to the fact that we don't even have smoke detectors in this building?
Well, we should have smoke detectors in this building.
And that's the first time I heard about it.
Why, and we have a...
Exactly. They could be hardwired, they could be battery operated, and we don't have any.
Why don't we talk to the chief about that?
And it wasn't even him.
I know, but maybe we should talk to the chief about having smoke detectors put in here. I think, and they should be hardwired to the fire department or somewhere.
Well, it'd be hardwired within this building, hardwired is just so...
Electricity, yeah.
The battery's a bad one.
Yeah. We should, I, we should have that. Cameras, cameras, I think the employees do need that, seriously.
So what I'm gonna request, then...
Wish Linda was here, you know, just so we could...
She's not.
I know, and she's not here for another week or so, so...
What are you doing Monday? Mondays are bad, huh? Monday morning?
What time? Next week? Yeah.
It wouldn't even be a morning. What time does most people get here around noon? Everybody's here at noon?
On Monday, everybody's here by noon, yeah. Most come at nine, but...
Is there a better day?
Wednesday, Wednesday, everybody's here in the morning.
At nine AM? All right, so can we have a meeting on the tenth at nine AM, specifically with every individual in this building?
Man, we already talked to them.
No, I don't, I think we did it individually, I don't think we met as a group.
We did, we got chastised for that on the town.
Did anybody voice opposition to that?
What?
The cameras?
Mr. Pierce did.
No, no, no.
Yeah, he asked why.
No, he asked the both, he was against the panic alarm.
He was against both.
I mean, the panic alarm.
He was against both. And then we passed over the, we talked about the two and then we passed over the third.
No, I think...
You're opposed to meeting with the employees?
I don't think it's necessary, I'm not opposed to it, I just don't think it's necessary. I think we know what they want. They voiced that opinion to me personally.
Excuse me, can I get in on this conversation?
Certainly, only if you come up to the microphone. Please don't chastise us.
Because I'm after you. I'd like to ask something. You brought up the mention of the bylaw committee, and there's not meeting, which I agree with you. It's, I mean, it should be going and going much stronger than it's going. Should there be a bylaw about the security of this building?
I don't think...
Or do you think that's something that goes...
I think it, I think it goes with the time, technology.
I think we can do it.
I, yeah, I know you can do it, but every time that you people bring up something about cameras, Cory checks...
They hate it.
Anything.
I know.
There is so much opposition.
It's to this board, but it's not...
Why?
Because it's, it's...
I don't know.
I mean, who's gonna man them? Who's gonna look at them? Where are they gonna be kept? I mean, what, on the streets today? You walk the street, you're on a camera.
It's a delay tactic.
You go to a red light, you're on a camera. You get in the store, you're on a camera. I mean, you can't even take something out of your shopping cart and put it in the wrong place, but somebody knows you've done it.
I don't get it, I think, I think...
It's such a big deal here.
I think ignorance is bliss. I've been involved like yourself for a long time, and I just, I thought about it over the, that special town meeting still troubles me, it really does. I'd like to say, I slept that night.
It was a waste of time.
But I'd like to say that it doesn't bother me, I can move on, I'm trying to move on the best I can. But I think about it, every board of selectmen has had opposition, and I don't know why.
I don't know why either.
It's every single board, it's not a conservative group, it's not a liberal group, it's just the opposing group to who's the majority of the board.
And like I brought up before, it's in blogs, it's in Facebook, I mean...
It's bad out there, I know, and Facebook, it's insulting.
It's all over the place. What happened to just being a town, getting along, trying to get along, and not getting up there and trying to tear everybody asunder?
So what does this have to do with security?
The security is because you're getting the opposition again.
But the bylaw, that's why I wanna have a meeting with the people in this building.
I don't understand it. I mean, I just don't understand why everybody's putting such a big ooh about it.
When you do, because I'll never understand it.
And I'm wondering, does the bylaw committee have to get concerned in something like this?
I don't think so.
Then they'd have to be voted in at the town meeting. Would it pass at the town meeting again? You got a group of twenty-five people.
We couldn't even get a revamp of the advisory committee. We do not have a CIPC committee anymore, and that's a bylaw committee.
We couldn't even, we couldn't even pay bills that we needed to be paid, two bills, outstanding bills.
Three bills.
Three bills.
I know that.
That's sad. So I don't know, that's why I'm brought this up tonight. I think it's an easy fix, it's quick, it's not that expensive. The town fantastic, can do it, they can set up the cameras, no big deal, set it up at the police station.
I've been, well, I, well...
You know, do it somewhere.
I've been speaking with Scott, who gave the presentation, you know, we're not transparent, he came here and he gave a presentation.
I know, I know.
He literally just looked at me and shook his head.
It's pathetic.
And said, you know, what that, you know, what's going on in the town of Brookfield?
Question.
Yeah. It's sad. So are you, are you opposed to meeting with...
I'm not opposed to it, but I think we can, I think it's needed. I think they need it, I think the majority of them want it.
So let's get their voice in on that.
They, I thought we already did, but if you wanna do it again, I'm okay with it. I don't know if I can come to that meeting, though.
So what day can you come?
What time did you say?
I said 9:00 AM.
Monday?
Wednesday.
Put it down. I'll try.
Well, you need to be here or there's technically no meeting.
I know. That's true, huh? Put it down.
I'll be here. So December 10th, 9:00 AM, right here in the banquet hall. Is there anything going on Wednesday? It's just Tuesday, so...
Not that I know, but I have a calendar.
If there is something going on, we'll do it in the kitchen.
I just think it's, it's gotta, we gotta get it done.
I don't know where I'm at with the cameras. I think I'm opposed to the key swipe, car swipe.
I think it's a little...
I think that's overkill. Panic alarms, I'm not opposed to.
I'm not.
I think out of all three of those, I'm more inclined to do that. Smoke detectors, one hundred percent.
Panic, nah.
I can't believe you get away with that.
I don't know if it's a getting away with, it's just, you know, wow, what an oversight.
It's a public building.
Anyways, okay, that's settled. One more thing.
Thank you, guys.
One more thing. A constituent emailed us. I don't know if you're aware of it?
Yep.
And it's in regards to having building permits online and why can't we...
Well, it wasn't just that, it was a whole minutia of things.